Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Prescott City Council meeting for March second two thousand twenty-two. We have seven out of seven councilors present this evening. Please join me in the first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. I have a nice little house and a quite a bit of business to discuss this evening. And the first item of business is to discuss the public hearings for the approval of the renewal of application of marijuana license for Northern Maine Flower Booting Business here in Prescott. I'll turn this over to the city manager.
Thank you, Council. We did put a notice in the paper, did was in there last week for notification to the public. Staff has reviewed this. Police Department and the co-enforcement officer inspected the building and they are recommending reapproval of a medical license for Northern Maine Flower.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody from Northern Maine Flower wants to speak on behalf of this application this evening? Is there anybody from the public who would like to comment on this application this evening? So we'll open the public comment, public hearing for this this evening. If anybody's got anything to say, now's the chance to do that. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask city council for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve a renewal marijuana license for Northern Maine Flower with location of five forty Main Street.
Second. It's been moved by Jake and seconded by Jeff. Is there any other comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, all those opposed, seven zero. Thank you very much. Next item of business is citizen comments. The opportunity for people to submit comments either personally or online or by email. They have to be, the email and online has to be done previous to the meeting tonight. Kim, I'll ask you here, the clerk, have you got any emails or comments for us for this evening?
No.
Oh, okay, thank you. Is there anybody from the Prescott area that would like to comment on behalf of anything they want to talk about this evening? Now's your opportunity to come before city council. Seeing none, we'll close the citizen comments section and move directly to the consent agenda for this evening. So we have on the consent agenda, the approved minutes from our last meeting on February second two thousand twenty-two. Approved the two thousand twenty-two warrants three, four, and five, totaling one million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars, forty-one cents. Amendment to post issuance of a compliance policy. Approved the appointment to the downtown revitalization committee, and that person is Matthew McGinley. Thank you, Matthew, for your interest there. Approved the M V O T over limit permit for construction. This was an overlay, I believe, on the five-way intersection at State Street. And finally, the aristic agency on aging support lever. As council, you can approve these separately or together. What's your, what's your wishes?
I move we move them as one motion.
Second. Moved by Craig and seconded by Jake as the consent approved as one motion. Is there any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, all is opposed, seven zero. Thank you very much. Next item of business is old business, and we get to the enterprise agreement. We'll start with Martin Puckett. This is something we've been discussing for a few months now. And it has to do with our vehicles, basically, here in Prescott, for those of you that are watching at home. So Martin can bring us up to speed and then talk about the latest developments and spend some time on this one.
So council, what we included in the packet is all the materials. Last meeting, we heard from Josh from Enterprise. He gave us an overview of the program and council asked for more information. And what we've done is part of the packet is a financial analysis. So we wanted to take, excuse me, we wanted to take a look at what their figures were, look at the replacement schedule, and do the best estimate what we had of what the vehicle replacements would be for two thousand twenty-two. So I believe it's page, page five after the fleet planning analysis of our style. They took what the monthly payment lease would be for the, for what we believe we could get for two thousand twenty-two vehicles. So the top of the vehicle list starts at the Ford Escape. So the top portion of that is what the monthly lease payment would be for the vehicles. So they listed what if it would be a new vehicle or replacement vehicles, the first column. They already have some VIN numbers associated from the manufacturer. The description is the third column. And so the term and the AM down, what that would be is the aftermarket that's associated with vehicles. And that's the, that's the last column there. So in the, in the aftermarket, so for the cruisers, anything for some of the small plow vehicles, lift gauge and things of that, that's the money that we would have to come up front. It doesn't get amortized in part of the fleet vehicle. So the assumption is that we will be able to get vehicles. The rec department, we tries to do it, do an RFP for pickup truck, and we have no bids. So it's no surprising that it's tough to get vehicles right now in this climate due to COVID and multiple manufacturer issues. So what we believe is we can get these vehicles listed. However, it'd probably be thirty weeks out is what they estimate, twenty-five to thirty weeks out before we could actually get these vehicles. But what we did is we took the month, we, we, we took together monthly costs, so we annualized it. So we're looking at the annual payment for the list of these vehicles to be a hundred and four thousand dollars. And we also included forty-four thousand. That's the aftermarket I was just talking about for the, for the lease cruisers. So total annual cost would be just shy of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a list of these, for these vehicles listed. Knowing we probably wouldn't get them into the last quarter, so we won't see that total annual payment in two thousand twenty-two. But what, what the finance director did in that bottom portion of that sheet that's listed in the green is the comparison, if we were to say we had a year full of payments on these vehicles, he did a comparison of what the monthly lease was by department. So you could see what we have in, what we have for reserve balance. So right now, currently, we have three hundred and four thousand for reserve balance, what we have sitting right now. So that kind of gives you a comparison of, of what we have in reserves, what the annual lease would be, and also by department. So we can track where that would be compared to what we have done. The call, the, down below that is historical reserve summary. So this is where we're really trying to look at comparison, considering what we've done in the past four years. So for, for two thousand twenty-one, we set, we set aside hundred and seventy-three thousand in, in reserves for for vehicle replacement. Twenty twenty, we set aside a hundred and eleven thousand in two thousand nineteen, a hundred and three thousand in twenty eighteen, a hundred and one thousand. So this definitely has fluctuated over the past four years of what we put in for, for vehicle replacement. That's really not part of the capital improvement plan. We, we set aside what we, what we need to try, we'll put aside for vehicles. And unfortunately, it comes down to what we can budget for. So we do see that fluctuation. So it's hard to, based upon when we don't get charged for that monthly leasing till vehicles actually arrive. So we don't get charged until it's here, what gets here, we start paying that monthly fee. So it is kind of hard to put in for two thousand twenty-two what we'll actually, what we'll actually spend. But even if we take those out for a full year, we'll be below what we set aside in, in reserves. So I know that was a big question at the last meeting. It looked, the program sounds great, it looks great, but financially, how does this, how does this look? So that bottom portion, that's our work. Even though it's on the enterprise spreadsheet, that's something that the finance director put in there to take a look at. So a lot of, there's still a lot of questions what we can get for vehicles, and obviously, there's a shortage. I know the hybrids, they put a hold on those, so those no longer are going to be eligible for probably for two thousand twenty-two pickup trucks. It's everyone's best guess when we'd be able to get those as part of the, part of the fleet. So year by year, this, this will change based on availability. This is the worst time to do it, to try to look for vehicles, obviously. But we do believe that using Enterprise is the best chance that we have on getting, on getting cruisers.
So if a large company like Enterprise can get a, a smaller municipality going through a dealership network, we're probably not going to be able to get them either, right? So it's not like, wow, we're, you know, we're better off going on our own. We're not?
That's right. I don't, other than trying to find used vehicles or trying to get what's on a lot, and it's a bidding war, it's going to be difficult to get these, these vehicles in the other way. This is probably our best chance on replacing these cruisers this time.
One of the, I was flipping through the pages, and on a previous presentation, we had a graph, and it showed a chart over a period of seven or eight years, and it was equipment replacement from reserves. It was up, down, up, down, up, down, up, down. One of the things that we can do with this move to Enterprise is we can pretty much average that out over a more steadily period of time. Brad, does that make sense to what you're seeing?
Yeah.
So, so we don't have the peaks and valleys, right?
Right. And the biggest thing right now I'm running into is, you know, with the cruisers, they're costing a lot for that maintenance cost, even though cruisers aren't part of the maintenance program through Enterprise. But it's just, if they're new, they're not going to have these transmission issues, or if they do, they're going to be warranted. The big cost I think that we're running into.
But you, I just want to interrupt you, Martin, but, you know, I have the press presentation there.
That's my question. So when, on the, in the two thousand twenty-one budget, you budget fifty thou, uh, fifty thousand, four hundred bucks for four years. Okay, so is, is that just payments, or is that like one cruiser, or what, how was that break down to?
So what we've, what we have done in the past historically, I think this was starting in around two thousand, two thousand six, is we budgeted for one and a half cruisers per year. And we thought that was enough for, that was basically enough for, we were looking at thirteen, sixteen cruisers at the time. So that was a replacement schedule we were on.
And so that was just like the payments?
Uh, no, that was, that was to fund.
Yeah, okay.
For a new.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you take a look at that compared to what you're talking about right now, your one replacement, I mean, we're talking about a lot more cruisers in year one replacement than we were back in two thousand twenty-one. Right? So if you took, if you took, you know, a good part of this year one replacement cost and added that to your two thousand twenty-one budget, I mean, that would be way higher than what it is right there. You know what I mean?
Yes, yeah.
Because we're replacing a lot more cruisers in, in, you know, year one than we were back in two thousand twenty-one.
Right. One, one of the major things in talking with the fleet manager, Mr. Deffner, is we, just I believe it was last week, we sat down, and we had three cruisers that were, that were off the road in the shop. So that schedule of doing one and a half cruisers is not adequate for
Right.
for our fleet. So we are running into a problem. The other thing is that, in a pleasing time, you can come up and talk, is that it's a retain, it's a retention and attraction for, for the officers. This is one of the things that a couple of years ago was unique to the department, that we're doing this, this cruiser program. Now you're seeing more departments are also adopting this response times, and it's also a key part of it. So then we meet our contractual obligation to the, to the police department to try to increase the number of cruisers.
So Cy, after this, would immediately give the remaining officers a cruiser?
Uh, no, no, we, we still are. I believe it's around a lot of cruisers.
So where we kind of stand right now. Ride over here, because my cruiser is currently in the shop with a broken rear axle. They just put new brakes in it, and apparently either my axle seized up on the car or the, the brakes broke. But regardless, that car was in a wreck many years ago. Rear end was banged up on pretty, pretty good. And ever since then, it's had problems. We got another car.
What, that's yours, your car, sir?
My car's a twenty-fourteen.
A fourteen?
Yeah.
So it's eight years old?
Yeah. Uh, we have a second car, uh, which is corporal pelleteers, which has over two hundred thousand miles on it, which has been in the shop in this past two weeks alone, three times for traction, traction control issues and suspension issues. Uh, we have Deputy Chief Hayes's car, which is also over two hundred thousand miles, and that one has some severe rust issues where it might not make it into next year. And then we have Detective Seeley's truck, which has developed a very strong ticking sound coming from the engine, and that has recently been checked, and there are engine issues with that vehicle. So we are possibly looking at four vehicles that can kind of go at any point.
It's a high tip.
We call it the farm truck, but, um.
Time tips.
Just kind of touching on, uh, Mr. Martin's point was from patrol standpoint, I, I came over here from Kirbup PD, and one of the things that attracted me was the mainstay retirement when you guys brought that onboard and then the take-home car program. I'm a neat freak. I like keeping my things organized, and one of the big attractions to me was having my own car, the way I can set up the way I want it. And I know it's clean, I know it's going to be fueled up, I don't have to worry about someone else using it. On top of that, prior to me becoming fleet manager, Officer White was the fleet manager, and he brought up some numbers in terms of our response time, which greatly showed that we have a very quicker response time compared to not having take-home cars. So in terms of the incentive and retention, I can't stress enough how important that is to the officers at, at the PD. They keep asking me every day, how's this program going? And they're excited for it. And in my recent training, I went to Downstate to obtain a physical fitness instructor course. One of my classmates from my academy class, who works at Gardner PD, was mentioning how they are looking at doing a take-home car program because they, a lot of agencies in Southern Maine are actually doing take-home car programs now. And it's always nice for me to tell them, like, you know, that originally started with Prescott. We were the first municipality in the state to actually do that. So in terms of the retention incentive, I can't say how important that is for us in terms of retaining guys and attracting new guys and gals. So. And then in terms of the fleet maintenance right now, like I said, those four cars in particular are ticking time bombs, and it'd be unfortunate for me to say, like, I gotta recall the fleet and no more take-home car programs. So, uh, if you guys have any questions for me right now, I'll try to answer anything I can, but I just kind of want to fill you in on our perspective.
Thank you.
Cy things, and you very know the current state of the fleet, so.
Good. Martin, this is more than just a PD issue, but the PD has the majority of the car miles per year and stuff in a fleet, right?
Correct.
So we're, we're considering, you know, other, other departments and stuff in this proposal over a period of time?
Yes. Can, I guess, just piggyback on Gary's point, though, can you, like, maybe I don't understand what lease equity is, but like, can you explain to me, like, how there's savings, right? Because if, if we do what is proposed, it's a hundred and forty-eight thousand per year. And right now, you know, we've been dedicating a cruiser and a half, so around fifty thousand per year in capital. Granted, I know maintenance might be a little bit higher, fuel costs might be a little bit higher, but it's still almost three times the price to go with the Enterprise quote.
Well, no, because that, that, that's the rest of it.
But that's taken into account the whole city. We're just talking about police up top there. So the police is what adds up to a hundred and forty-eight thousand? So we, I mean, we should.
Well, I mean, on the vehicles and there's.
All city too.
Yeah, there's co-enforcement, and then general government vehicle, and then the PD animal control, parks and rec.
This is what would happen year one.
Yeah, but I mean, when we're all in, our lease payments are two hundred and seventy-one thousand per year, which is a lot more than an average of a hundred and twenty grand a year in capital plus, you know, some miscellaneous bills. And I'm not saying I mean against that, just explain to me, like, the big gap there in, like, what lease equity means and like how that creates savings for us.
I'm gonna guess that Brad's probably looked through these numbers and stuff, so maybe he's got his mind in like.
Yeah, the, the first few years where we have a lot of lease equity, they just don't know where their payments, a lot less. It's basically taking the vehicles that we have, and Enterprise is taking them, and we're basically getting paid for it as a credit on our monthly payment.
But it is, I mean, it's showing, it's showing this column, it's showing the equity owned and then the equity leased. And the equity leased is what makes the program save money. I just don't understand what that is. If you can help me understand what that is.
It's like we're trading in vehicles. When you trade in a vehicle, you get equity in it. It's going to cut down on your overall cost in the vehicle, your overall payment. Those are the vehicles we own. When we get to year, like, two thousand twenty-six, I think, you can see on that lease column where it goes to thirty-three. That's our, all of our vehicles. So now that equity owned is zero because we don't own any vehicles anymore.
So it's a phased-in.
Right.
And then, so what happens with the equity leased? Is that we pay payments, and then that offsets what our payment is, or?
Well.
Because you know what I mean, like, two hundred and seventy-one thousand in lease payments is a lot more than what we're putting aside for capital.
Well, if it's like most leases, you pay for the part of the vehicle you use, but, but you're buying the whole vehicle, but you turn it in, like, they were saying, what, after three years on some and six years on others? And so because we're not using them up like Officer Deffner just kind of explained, they're basically worthless. Those cars, these cars would be being sold, and they have a value to them. So they're going to take that money and they're going to basically sell that, but it's, it's, it's coming off as a, as something is worth something when they get rid of it from us, that we get credit for, for, before the next one comes.
It's, it's fairly dependent on the value of trade-in.
So is it basically the spread between what our buyout on the lease would be versus what they can sell it for?
No, from what I gather, they're basically being the bank, and we're more or less kind of purchasing it. But it's only a three-year use of it.
So we pay for the use for the three years we have it. If we were to buy the whole thing, we'd have to pay for the whole thing, but we don't. We only pay for the three years we have or the five years we have it. And then whatever's left over in equity is what you're seeing in that column that, that gets turned back in. Like, for instance, when I'm looking at leasing a vehicle, the vehicle's eighty thousand dollars, but if I only leased it for a period of four years, then I only paid the payments on it for the four years. So I've only paid about forty thousand on it. So, but there's another forty thousand in residual value that goes back because they have something to show for it, that they're getting back. because they have something to show for it, that they're getting back and I'm just paying for the part that I used.
And in that case, Craig, I, your, in your explanation, the vehicle would probably have fifty or sixty in residual value. And that's where that difference of ten or twenty thousand offsets uh, that Enterprise is handling. That's what it's sold for at auctions or
Okay. So you're looking at the same chart, uh, over a ten-year period, they've added, summarize the savings as three hundred eighty thousand dollars over ten years to the city or an average of sixteen thousand dollars a year, so you guys follow that? Do you see that? So I think that one of the things that's not on a dollars and cents chart like this is the maintenance scheduling. And the fact that our departments are having to do their annual or their weekly jobs, daily jobs and then on an ad hoc basis are actually going out there and doing fleet maintenance. I think one of the advantages of going to a, a, a maintenance or a vehicle company such as Enterprise is to establish the schedule prior to, you know, things going catastrophically wrong. Um, and also, um, Enterprise has contracts with local people to do services. And so they would be using those local shops on a contract pricing that historically is a little bit below what the door rate is. So there are some potential savings on maintenance if Enterprise is doing our work basically for us and taking that responsibility away from department heads, which I feel like they have enough on their plate and now they don't have to worry about their vehicles, so.
Well, and I, I keep looking at the opportunity cost. So you've got one guy that's got his vehicle out, so you've got more people sharing a common vehicle that's putting even extra wear on it. And now he potentially doesn't have that response time that we're bragging about that's quicker. Um, and that's just one example that you're
Yeah, I just lost my train of thought.
You know, I, I think that probably what's in order is, you know, are we gonna move ahead with this program or not? I'm not certain what the minutes read, if we tabled this or not last time.
We did.
If you did table it, then the motion is to reconsider the previous proposal from Enterprise and to get that back on the agenda, so. Um, if the council was willing to allow me to make that motion, um, so that we can discuss this proposal, I'd like to move that we reconsider the Enterprise, um, fleet, uh,
What's it for reconsider?
Enterprise agreement established for the city of Prescott. So, motion to reconsider, please. We'll need a second, seconded by, so moved by Kevin and seconded by Craig. So now, uh, all those in favor are reconsidering the motion, so we can discuss it. Seven, zero. Thank you. Now, um, the merits on the table is to discuss the, the motion as presented and, uh, and we can move, move forward, so. Further comments or discussion? Floor is open.
One of the other things I forgot to bring up there was the, uh, just the seasonal wear and tear and rust factor. Um, he brought that up of some vehicles having rust. There's unless you've got a, a lemon going on, you're gonna have rust issues in three or four years. So that's somewhat unique to our area, but I think we need to capitalize on that if there's a way to reduce or eliminate that factor.
Jeff, you got, you're, you're an auto body guy and maintenance guy?
I'm not an auto body guy, I'm a repair guy. Um, I think it's a good idea to to go this route with the lease program. Um, these older vehicles that we're dealing with right now, I mean, God only knows what's being made for repairs or what else these things are. I mean, I don't know, if we can kind of wash our hands of that aspect of our fleet, I would
So I think one of the proposals here is to do this for through twenty thirty-one, so what a ten-year deal, Martin?
No, it's the way that this, that's a good question. I, I did ask him, it's per vehicle. So anytime we want to opt out, we just do it by vehicle, so that's kind of the plan. This is, this is what he estimates, but that's gonna be fluid. Um, we just center into, into the agreement and we control it by vehicle, so. Um, it's, if we wanted to go out, it's vehicle by vehicle. There's no magic. We, we can totally stop the program and look at buying new, but if we at any time are not happy with it, we just start phasing out these vehicles just like we're phasing in, so.
But if we were to opt out of some of them, I mean, this, this analysis is based on thirty-three vehicles, so that savings would be reduced and stuff probably if we started changing the formula, so. But I thi- I think that, you know, it, it, in the next few years, to see that it works out as great or it doesn't and you wanna start reducing that, so. There's no real penalty for reducing the fleet, right?
No, no, there's not. Nope, there's, there's a minimum that the smaller communities have been, have been asking a lot of questions for this and I believe it's fifteen vehicles for, for, to enter into this agreement is the, is the
They're gonna have fifteen minimum. Um, I'll go back to you guys and so Jay.
Um, I mean, I'm fine with the proposal. Uh, you know, I, we have, we throw a lot of numbers around here. Um, we do have an estimated savings, um, even if we don't hit that target um, of sixteen thousand dollars in annual savings, uh, we are certainly going to have a much younger fleet. Um, hopefully the costs don't go uh, too far above what our estimates are here. But I mean, we have eight-year-old vehicles in the police department and we're gonna drop that down to three-year-old vehicles, which I, you know, is a clear benefit to the city. Um, and I guess I would only, you know, ask the, you know, task the finance department and Martin to, uh, make sure one, everyone is uh, via when we do get the enterprise agreement, so we can make sure we talk to our vehicle maintenance, maintenance. And additionally, um, set up a, a plan when we do finally fully convert our fleet, um, or even annually get some updates on what the costs are and compare them to what we have, uh, what we have now. But aside from that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I've said enough for, for now. Mike, you, can you, can you address?
Yeah, um, I, I think the, uh, I, I think this will improve our, our fleet, but I, I question the savings. Um, I think it's based on a pretty fuzzy number, which is the equity earned between the lease, um, and, uh, I question that. I, I guess I'm of the mindset that this might be more expensive. And that if we need to, you know, get our police cruisers a little bit newer, then maybe we should do it through budgeting more capital, uh, not doing this.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I guess my, my thought is, is that, you know, they are the largest car buyer in the US, so I mean, they, they've got to have some savings on buying stuff, I would think, and I would think that certainly they, they know by vehicle because they, they hold them and then they turn around and sell them and they're at the point where the value is coming down and the maintenance is building up and it's like they had with the graph there last month. And that does make sense to me, but I think that the number one thing that really makes sense to me is that this is something to go, um, put in place where, where there is a an effort by, by the entire motor fleet in the city of these smaller vehicles that, that we have a plan for them and then someone's washing out over them and then we maintenance them and we, and we do that because, um, you know, I've been on the council almost ten years and there's been multiple occasions when all of a sudden, oh yeah, you know, they stand in front of us and then six months later, oh yeah, the truck broke. Well, how long's it been broke? Oh, that's been bad for years. Why didn't you tell us six months ago? Well, it wasn't on their mind at the moment and, and no one was really looking at it, you know, because it wasn't something they were using all the time, so. You know, we've had multiple things where all of a sudden they had to come up with an extra thirty or forty thousand that year to buy a pickup or buy a SUV or buy this or buy that from all the different departments, so. I just kind of think that this is gonna do what, what, what we aren't set up to do or, or, or what we need to be doing because everyone's doing their own jobs, is that it's gonna have some way to make sure that everything kind of gets maintenance, everything gets cycled through, everything gets looked at and, and we've got a, a way to cohesively do that across the entire fleet. That's the thing we've been missing with our vehicles and, and there's no mystery. That's something we've missed in a lot of past years with our building. We tried hard to make that up the last few years, so I think, I think this is going right down the road of trying to be good stewards for the assets of the community, but also provide safe assets for our public safety, uh, so that they can get to calls because certainly, uh, you know, that, that isn't any good, um, that if they break down, right? You know, and, um, and I guess, I guess the only last thing that I'd say is that I think, I think this to me makes sense.
Thank you. Uh, Gary?
Yeah, I mean, you know, like I say, you know, we've, we've adopted a lease program up at our shop and it's the best thing we ever could have done.
Oh, okay.
Yep, I mean, it was, and, and what started the whole, the whole thing was back probably five years ago or so. We, we were, you know, getting maintenance costs. One, there was one year that we had just maintenance costs almost over a hundred thousand bucks. For like three tractor trailer trucks and that was without smaller vehicles and stuff too, you know, and, uh, so when we looked at the whole lease program, I mean, right now we're paying less in leases than what we paid that one year just for repairs. And we've got a lot of newer vehicles. They're safer when we go on up in the United States, we're not worried about these things breaking down or, or not passing due to inspections and stuff like that. So when you look at its public safety type of measures, stuff like that, you know, you're a lot better off with newer vehicles than you are fixing up these older ones.
I think the thing is, is that, you know, in the final, my final, my have the final comment is that they're in the business of vehicle maintenance. The city of Prescott is not in the business of vehicle maintenance, so. We do it on an ad hoc basis, you know, when things happen and they address them and you know, when they get to the certain point where it's tipping over, we replace them and that's what the reserves are for, but I think that finance department has studied this to the point where one of the attractive things of this is to level out things on a year-by-year basis so we don't have to beat some valleys, which historically over the last ten, eleven years of, of data, we have had some steep up and downs. The final point is that Enterprise has over seventeen hundred government agencies that they're currently offering this service for. Cities, school departments, uh, counties, uh, special districts, um, towns, city of Manchester, New Hampshire, uh, Newton, Massachusetts, uh, some pretty, you know, I'm sure they've got a lot of smarts and a lot of intelligence in those communities and I'm sure that they were doing business the way we are currently doing it. They've opted to go this way. I don't see a lot of downside when if we don't care for it five, six years from now, we go back the other way.
Yeah, there's not a lot of
I don't think there's a lot of risk here, so that's my, my final comment on.
Um, is there any other comments? Anybody else wanna make a, make a motion?
From an insurance aspect, uh, is it, is there a, I mean, there's not gonna be enough of, uh, a change in insurance costs for this updated fleet versus what we have now.
Probably cheaper Jeff, because the human vehicle
I mean, but either way, wouldn't be enough to make squat difference.
Alright, so that, that is a good question. We did, uh, so we're, the city attorney has looked through this document and we have made some changes. Um, since Enterprise hasn't done this in Maine, we did have to make some changes and talk with the insurance company. So one of the major holdup to this program, um, I was hoping to get this for the budget process. We talked about it last November. Was the insurance aspect of it. Can have it match, uh, insurance laws for the state of Maine and municipality, so there's a lot of going back and forth, so. What's in this packet is what we, we agreed upon for the set limits for, for municipality, so. They haven't done this in, with the main municipality, so we had to make it unique, but yet the cost, uh, for, for a brand-new cruiser compared to an old cruiser, a new cruiser costs around three hundred and fifty dollars uh, annually per cruiser for a new one and older ones were slightly less by about thirty dollars. So it's a, it's a small fee for, for the difference.
Yeah, fair enough. Are there any other, uh, comments or questions or would we entertain a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would move that we authorize the city manager to sign the enterprise agreement. Second?
A move by Jake and seconded by Jeff. Is there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. All those opposed? Six, one. Six, one, zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Brad. Uh, yes, sir?
Um, just one question now. Uh, on this sheet, we have three hundred and four thousand roughly set aside for vehicle replacement in each department's reserve. Should we move that to kind of its own reserve, like enterprise reserve or whatever, so make the payments?
Yeah, it's an interesting question. I might have thought about that earlier today, cause we, I think right now we've got reserves set up by department, right? I'm kind of of the, of the interest that we kind of remain in that, in that, uh, with that for a, a period of time and just in case that we don't get our vehicles from them and we have local opportunities. Um, so rather than switching it all over and then switching it back because we've got local opportunities, would it make sense, since we've already passed the twenty-two budget, would it make sense to just leave them where they are right now?
Well, I'd leave them there for another reason being that, uh, like Parks and Rec and Public Works are having their reserves budget for vehicles that are outside of this program.
Yeah.
That's all lumped together.
Yeah, no, that, well, he's just talking about a year just for vehicles that could potentially be replaced.
Yeah, and, and I think as those vehicles come in and the program comes in, we can probably move them at that point, but
We need to.
Yep. Where, I mean, where would you come up with the extra funds then if, if we didn't do something like that?
Well, we're, we still have to use the reserve money this year. You know, or I, you know, there's really no reason not to use it until it's run out or whatever, um, which would be
I guess all I'm just questioning is we, we voted on the budget and this has got a cost that's not voted in the budget, so we've gotta come with, up with the money from somewhere, right?
Right, in which it, it, yeah, it's, it's paid out of the reserves, which very soon it's not, it's not gonna cost anything.
So what?
So again, as the agreement comes due and stuff, I think we can move them at that time.
Well, and we heard from him that they're nine months out on time.
Right, he's not
discussed at the last workshop. Uh, so on the first page, it's kind of, I put in the, uh, city's mission statement. We did have our goal setting on the fifteenth. So the number one thing that came back was the, was housing that received the most votes. Uh, so what I, what I did is basically put other concepts we talked under that, so housing definitely was the number one. We talked about different options for housing. Corporal housing seemed to be one of the top, top elements that we're looking at. But when we had the discussion, we were looking at all elements of housing, so we were looking at market rate housing, subsidized, single-family housing, uh, tiny houses came up in that discussion. And also identifying property locations that could be used for, for potentials and also looking at the cost of construction, uh, land costs, road costs, utility costs. So we got, I think we, staff and, uh, council gave us some really good ideas that we can follow up on. I think next is, is, uh, we have had a, a small working group talk about this. We've talked with some developers already, trying to get a little bit more information. Um, what I would like to do is
Feature to some other entities.
And we can establish working groups in these two to augment the staff, you know, needs that you've got there too. So we can have up to two counselors on any of these things too.
But to answer your question, I don't really think it's possible to do all these, all these at once. I think we need to, I'd like to go back to the staff. It is difficult and just, just today, over the past week, I think we've had three, three meetings that did require council approval. And I can't say that we had had those three meetings council representation. So I think over the past two weeks, we have discovered what is beyond realistic for the amount of meetings. So I think we need to be a little mindful of the timeframe and actually separate these out a little bit. Meetings do tie up a lot of staff, so I think segmenting this out so it's not all at once. I know the EMS thing right now, that's, that tied up most of my day and then we threw in a meeting and that was, that was the full day. So I think that is important to kind of focus these groups out on top of what we're already, already doing for meetings. I think we do need to be mindful of the timeframe, so it's done properly.
Any other comments before we move on to the next agenda item, guys? Yep, got our goals. And again, thank you, everybody that participated in the progress and looking forward to seeing more updates. Next item, businesses, city hall update, item ten. Who'd like to start? Somebody on committee? Louis around? Louis is not. Who else? Dana?
The second floor offices are basically done. Contractors working on the stairwell on the south end of the building. Checked yesterday, that was almost done, you got about four more steps. Today, the electrical sub was installing lights in that stairwell. Smoke alarms in. I think they need to put in handrails and then we'll see if the fire marshal is ready to inspect. We need fire marshal inspection before we can occupy. Furniture wise, some is in, but not all of it. And the, I guess the goal would be, hopefully we'll get the, all the furniture so that we can just move once into the second floor. Committee members, Mike, you're on it?
I think Dana summarized it pretty good.
Anybody, anybody else on committee?
The, one of the things I would say that Dana, when he said that the stairwells were completed, they're probably going to be completed to a point of usability. They're not completed to a finish point and floors all done and everything else. So I think that's where the fire marshal is going to be a key player in saying, yes, this is adequate for what it needs to be right at this moment. So you can occupy the second floor, but there'll be a fair amount of trim work left inside of that area. But it's, it'll be usable as an emergency exit in case of fire. So I think that's there. I think the sprinkler issue has been ninety-five percent dissolved and that, that should be, fire marshal will also approve that. I think we've got a working plan for the third floor and the attic area with the sprinkler system as well. And I think if I'm not mistaken, everybody's pretty much in, in agreement on what we'll go on for third floor renovations. As far as finishes and everything else, I guess as a matter of fact, I think maybe the big thing now would be to make sure the two entrances are, were started as soon as possible. And we'll see what kind of completion time is going to be feasible for city hall. But I'm sure it's going to be sometime in the summer, whether it's early or mid, I can't tell you right now, but I would assume that.
So Tom, on the second stairwell, it is kind of not held up, but it's part of the process to occupy the second floor.
Correct.
On a, you know, level of complexity from one to ten, ten being real complex, where would you rate that stairwell project?
They've gone past the complexity portion, now they're in finishes and everything.
But was it like a?
It is plywood stair treads right now.
What I'm getting now?
You can walk on a plywood stair tread, it doesn't look nice, but you can walk on it.
What I'm getting now is we went through sixty, we had to go through sixty feet of vertical space. Was that a three, a five, or an eight, or a ten?
I'm going to say that that probably, I would have guessed that that was going to be a six or a seven. And it probably wound up being more of a four or a five.
So it was easier than they thought?
I believe it came through easier than they thought it was going to.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't really affect, we are where we are right now and stuff, but I, I know that it had been discussed and it was.
There was a lot of concern with the way the concrete in the area and that was able, they weren't able to take care of it. They were pretty ingenious on how they did it, so kudos to them.
So devote construction coming through, very good. Thank you, Reed and staff there. Are you guys thinking within ten days, you're going to be on the second floor?
Well, I don't know, Dana. That's hit or miss, isn't it?
It's hit or miss. If we only want to move once as far as furniture, we don't really have a specific date on when all of the other furniture is going to come in, so.
So electrical, power, heat pumps, lighting, flooring, doorways, sheet rock, paint, finishes, bathrooms, all done, right?
Other than the stairwell, I would say that they're all about at least ninety-five percent or better point and maybe even close to like ninety-seven percent. There's always going to be a few little items, but Dana's probably more correct in making sure the fire marshal is happy, making sure the stairwell is operable. And whatever small items there may be, and it may actually improve city hall not to move as quickly as they could. Because it might be smarter not to be there for an extra few weeks until the furniture is all in place, you know? If, if you're happy where you are or you can work where you are for the next ten more days, why would not do it and move in just once like Dana said and be done?
I guess the only thing is, is as soon as you guys move, they're going to get out, out access to the third floor and they could start demolition and stuff. So that's the only thing that I see, you know, as far as timeline goes and stuff.
But they have a fair amount of work in the stairwells and the exiting, and the exterior exits too, that they could work on.
Great, thank you for the update. Anybody else have any questions? Invite you guys to go down and see what's going on in the second floor open to the public yet? I mean, can they walk up pretty now?
I would say no, not at this time. The fire marshal still hasn't given us permission for office staff to use it, so I, I hold off.
Hold off until we announce it's available for, for tours.
I think at some point, we're going to have an open house, right? At some point down the road?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so anybody that's curious about this, at some point, we'll be able to have a total open house when all three floors are done, so. Looking forward to that day. I guess we're moving to new business next and that's the scheduled a public hearing for a dangerous building.
I have one new business.
You're on?
Oh, the door of the old, okay, I got you.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I make a suggestion?
Grant, I should have mentioned this when we did the agenda meeting, but could we move item fourteen now? I just, we have a member of the public who's.
Absolutely. All right, all right, thank you very much. So we'll take an item out of order and stuff and, and discuss the Star City ATV grant support request. You want to start with that, Martin?
Oh, sure. So I do see Mr. Hallid in the audience here. This is an annual meeting that I always like seeing. It's what the future projects are for the Star City ATV club. So this is a, it's a ritual we see every year and it means a sign of spring. That's what that's, this is part of us.
It's like Groundhog State. Do you want to, if you want to come on up? You've only been sitting here for an hour, so.
Interesting.
Thanks for coming in tonight.
For you guys that don't know me, I'm Richard Olllett from Star City ATV Club. Been doing it for seventeen years. This year, we're asking the city to support us in a municipal grant for sixty thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. This is a ninety-ten grant where the state pays ninety percent and the club does ten percent in, in kind labor. So out of that six thousand, or sixty thousand, we just got to come up with six thousand. So it's really a pretty good deal. In the past, it's been a seventy-thirty, but the state last year increased it, their share to ninety percent. So, which is real good. Some of the projects we got going on this year, most of it's on the Prescott Caribou Trail. We're going to replace two bridges on that Caribou end, re-flank the Mary Road Bridge, grade that whole trail fourteen miles. And of course, as Kevin and Greg know, it's a multi-use trail shared by both snowmobile and ATV. So it could be quite a bit of work on that trail this year. And then we got, we're going to put some crusher dust on a trail between Central Drive and State Street, I believe.
Yep, up the industrial park.
Yeah, yeah. So we've got quite a bit going on this year. That's everything in a nutshell.
Dick, what's the max that you could ask for from the state?
I don't know.
Or is it not, I asked you, you know, your percent went from thirty to ten percent, like.
I know.
Should you ask for more?
Well, we could, I, this is twenty thousand dollars more than we asked for last year.
Okay, that's good.
And I know they get a lot more money this year, so I asked for more money. But, yeah. So, you know, the registration fees went up to seventy-five dollars this year. That was one of the things on the task force. We stressed quite, you know, ATV division needed more help money-wise financially and, and that's what they, they came up with. I'm sure, they, we, they never refused us. They might cut it down to three thousand, but the last three or four years, they've always gave us what we asked for, so.
And the reason why is because you have the documentation on the projects that are worthwhile events to, to pursue, so.
Right, yeah, you have to do the work. I usually go to the bank and get what they allow us and so we can pay our contract just soon to get done. And then at the end of the year, they, we submit the application and they, they send us the money.
They reimburse you.
Right, yeah. Well, it's a pretty good deal.
Anybody got any questions for the president of the Prescott ATV Club?
Just a thank you for me, for everything you did there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I have other hats and stuff that I wear and one of them is the president of the Star City, or Prescott Snowmobile Club. And Dick has been a tremendous asset for us to work with over the last several years. Where we're, we're combining our efforts to, to build trails and to benefit of the recreation opportunity from motorized perspective in and around Prescott. Dick, for all the seventeen years you've done, God bless you and thank you very much for that. And, you know, I'd like to move that we approved the support in applying for this municipal grant. This is moved by Kevin and seconded by Mike. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dick.
Thanks, Dick. Back to item eleven, scheduled a public hearing for a dangerous building. We'll begin with Martin, the major code enforcement department.
So counsel, there is a correction on the, on the schedule of when this would be in front of us. It would be June first instead of May fourth. So there, there is a property that we have been looking at and the code enforcement officer does believe that it requires us to have a public hearing. Forty-five L Street is the location. It has been something that code's been working on. It's scheduled back in twenty nineteen and previous code enforcement officer did talk with the, with the owner. And they planned to demolish it back then. Unfortunately, nothing has, has been moving forward with it, so we have been getting complaints. We did resolve the issue that was across the street. That building has been demolished, so in the spring it will be newly conceded. So we've kind of been waiting on the timeline, hopefully that, hoping that this would urge the owners of forty-five L to report. But unfortunately, I think it's time to have a public hearing with the, talk to the landowners in front of the council.
So this is just a scheduled hearing on June first to discuss forty-five L.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Craig and seconded by Jeff. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Seven to zero, thank you.
What, what were you saying as to why it was pushed out? You're going to have notice in the paper?
Yes, and also the, the code enforcement officer is going to be out during that time.
Oh, well, I didn't even care.
Item twelve, information technologies. So this is regarding the upgrade to city council chambers during the renovations?
Yes, counsel, this is basically, I'll let Eric warn you and answer questions, but there's a request to talk about what we're going to put in the council chambers when they renovated. So I know it's still, still, we're still on the second floor, but there is, we have put money aside in the budget to approve the system. And Mr. Warren's already acquired some of these, some of this infrastructure. So he did put together a memo with a list of what we're looking at. And you'll see one of the requests he has here is some sort of area where you could set this up. And we even call this sound booth or, or some other location with some of these mixing devices to avoid the, the aspect of those being modified unintentionally.
Eric? I, I know this is a temporary setup and I'm sure that there's various levels of volume that people can't hear tonight. This is a temporary thing, but in the, in the new room, that's going to be equalized because there's multiple mic drops, right?
Yeah, we're going to be removing the existing old equipment. That's really just an amplifier and it doesn't have any gain controls, doesn't it? Doesn't really have any way to modify individual microphones. So be pulling those out, upgrading the, the microphones and then hopefully moving all the equipment towards the back of the room. So we can do live adjustments without disturbing the city council area.
So will we be able to run like Zoom meetings and stuff there? I mean, for not, because council isn't the only people that use that room. There's a lot of other opportunities there, so will they be, have opportunity to run Zoom out of there and stuff or, or some sort of online visual virtual meeting?
Yeah, we'll have a PC that will be dedicated there in the room. And that will be hooked up to the camera and all, all the microphones that we're going to be putting in. And we also have two four K very large displays on either side of the room. So if you're sitting in the audience and you're looking at city councils, your desk, there's going to be two very large displays on either side. That you can use to either display information during public meetings or, or for Zoom.
They're like PowerPoint and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Would we be able to have some sort of AV input from maybe either the podium or the city manager's location? So that, you know, if he had presentations he needed to show us, that it could feed into the system from there?
Yeah, we'd put in an HDMI extension from that location to the back and then we could put that into the system and switch it as needed.
Okay. I mean, you sit more or less next to the podium, right? So, okay, cool.
Can anybody else, got any?
I think my other thing, Eric, is if, I'm not sure what the best way to do this would be, but I know I had asked for this presentation. Because we have a lot of boards that meet in the city council chambers, but they don't necessarily sit in our seats. They kind of do the round table thing in the middle of the room. And if we were to stream those in the same way we do the city council meetings, would there be a way to kind of mic, you know, fit a portable mic that we can kind of use around the room?
Yeah, um, yes, the mixer board would accept another mic.
Okay, yeah, even a few mics you could put on the table, probably, right?
Yeah, for sure.
It's good that you mentioned that, as we have to figure out a camera placement. The camera is PTZ, so you can control with a joystick, but does need to be able to pick up those areas.
Thank you.
If there's any other, you know, requirements, like projectors or screens like that, I figured the large displays would do the, do a pretty good job. If there's any groups that need anything different, different requirements, let me know.
So you think you'll be able to do like an April, May or May-June install, once the room's finished?
We're waiting on you, all the equipment's at my office.
Can we also just make sure, from the standpoint of the rack or whatever, that it's, the, the sounded outputs is, you know, as minimum as can be?
I'm sorry?
From the, just the, the ambient sound of the fans and whatnot to keep the equipment cool? Can we just make that as quiet as possible too?
Yeah, and that was part of the consideration behind asking for some sort of, you know, AV booth in the back.
Inside the room or whatever.
Yeah, that we could, you know, operate out of, yet, you know, keep our noises quiet from the rest of it. It's also probably we're going, we're, we also need a place to locate the third floor network rack. So in first floor, we've, we've got a rack, in the second floor, we've got a rack, in the third floor, we'll need an area to put a rack. Makes sense that it would be, you know, easy to, to put it in there rather than having to choose some other place on third floor to do it. Yeah, so it, I think it'd be a worthwhile investment for what it would cost in two-by-fours and, and wall ward.
I would say when the building committee in, in the city hall committee gets that opportunity, that we invite Eric into those meetings and get some input as to that location. I'm sure that makes plenty of sense, so thank you for your, for your expertise there. Thanks for setting this up, every, every company, appreciate it, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item is the city of Prescott website. Start with, this is one of our goals.
This is one of our goals, so.
We're off and running.
We're off and running, so luckily some of this information was, started pre-COVID and COVID definitely shut this. This is one of the projects we put on the back burner. So there's quite a bit of information, take a little bit of time and please jump in with questions and comments. So a small committee was formed back in early twenty twenty to take a look at designs. So this reward was part of the discussions. He did set up a survey and we did get some feedback on the problem. So it's not, not beautiful, warm and fuzzy, what we got for feedback, but it was pretty honest and I think pretty effective on what our major flaws are for our website. The biggest thing was online services need to be prominent. They like the photographs, it works, we need to showcase a little bit more. But simple is better is what we heard here. Again, from what we talked about at the council meeting, they like the calendar, they like the social media feed that we should add. A lot of the stuff is outdated, we have some dead links on there. It needs to stay relevant, it needs to have input. Part of the website right now, we have a few users that do login and change it. But we need to have the access from more departments for relevant information in there. So we need a site that's user friendly and can be updated. Boy, you guys can see what's in there. There's a lot of, there's a lot of problems with our existing sites. So one of the major things that the committee did do was take a look at other communities outside the state, within the state and the surrounding area. And take a look at what they saw and what they liked. So I didn't include what those recommendations were, since it is two years old, there's a lot of new content out there for, for websites. But I did, it's been a hot, this has been a hot item with other communities. So I did include a table in there that shows what other communities have done for projects and what we could expect if we use similar services. So really, there's, there's three main entities that do specifically city websites, municipal websites. So you have Civic Plus, Dub Office and Revised. You can see these are mostly self-bang or what they've done, what they've done. But some of the costs, twenty, you can see the top one is twenty-four thousand put in a new website. And what they did is they spread it out over, over a few years to help offset that. So the, one of the least expensive ones was eighteen hundred dollars a year. Have been, I don't want to say anything bad about any of these websites, but there's definitely some that are better than others. So even though they spent a lot of money, it doesn't necessarily mean that, from my perspective, I found it useful for the information they had. I'll be dead honest, I, I didn't, I, I saw some flaws in it. So I think I had a meeting with, with you Kevin, and you said, let's talk to Southern Weston. So I did pluck some information off their website. They agreed with the, the costs that we're seeing on this, what others, the other communities have, have done. They also had some helpful tips on there and what, how to, how to design a website. They really said it's really important to, you know, get the input of the users. So part of the working group is talk to the people that use it the most, talk with citizens, the businesses that regularly use the site. Design something that's customer-centric. I heard that term again and again. But most importantly, have something that's easy for staff to use. Don't skimp when it comes to the training or employees to use a website. Make sure the training element is there and have whatever format you use, WordPress or whatever, make sure that staff's trained to use it. So don't keep it stagnant, was again and again, something that they, they have upon. I did talk to, to Mr. Warren, obviously, he's, he's the IT consultant. And I did look at what other departments have been using. So the library and the rec, they have used Borderline Digital, something that they say is, is an easy use format. Patty, who was in the rec as now in my office, she says it was really easy to update that site. It is a local company. So I did reach out and ask them what they would, what they would charge for a website. It'd be three thousand dollars to design a new website. They're located here in Prescott. It'd also be around seventy dollars, our annual fee for, for hosting too, we can break that out publicly. They were kind of excited about the ability to do that. They have done some websites in the surrounding area. I think they, they listed, I think there's five or six that they've done recently. So it, she was part of a former company and she broke up and bought out the company and kind of did her own thing. So I was kind of delighted to know that there is a local company that we could work with. Not saying that's the end-all-be-all. Next steps, what I imagine, if, whether we decide to do this route or not, is continuing to work in the group, get council input. And really start looking at what we want for, for design.
I think, isn't there another entity that's called WebCentrics maybe or something? Eric, why, that, aren't you in the radio station building?
That's, that's who does the rec and the library's website.
I believe though, that's who you talked to, Martin, I believe that the name of the company just changed.
Correct, yeah, that's now known as Borderline Digital.
Uh, okay, yeah, same company.
I'd like to have a chance to look at the websites that you've listed here. So we just got those chances tonight to see what those, what the town of Brunswick's look like and what Winslow's look like. And maybe we'll have seven different opinions of why we like him and why we don't. But in the meantime, I think maybe we ought to not waste another thirty days and go push ahead with the working group to look at some RFPs. And you said the RFPs are going to take some time, why don't we just invest the next thirty days in going in that direction? But at the same time, not make a decision as to which company, so it allows us the opportunity, I think for the seven of us at least, to look at some of these web pages. Over the next thirty days and then come back at the next meeting with some, some comments. Does that make any sense to you, Martin?
Yeah, I, I'd have to design a, a website RFP, hopefully I can borrow from another community. Put that, definitely put that together. Talk with the working group. I think again, the talking to these, these companies in these other towns, getting something that's user-friendly. I think the biggest thing is the training aspect of it too, that we're going to include the RFP. So it'll take me a little bit of time to put together that RFP while we're doing that, it's still a little working.
Do you guys have a different opinion?
It's just my opinion, so.
Tom, Brunswick's got a way nicer website than we do.
One vote for Brunswick.
Looks good, oh really?
It's a nice looking website.
This is where my daughter and my son live, so there we go.
So I, I guess I would just make a comment. I used to spend quite a lot of time building websites in a previous life. I would recommend just having probably a single point person from the city do all the updates. If you let a bunch of people run the aisle, it's very hard to keep a nice, consistent look. And I'd love to keep it local, but looking at our, our local sites, at least right now, there's, there's quite a few things broken on them as far as, you know, maps. Maps at the rec or links that are broken at the library. And that happens, but you know, that's, you know, it's something we don't want to have happen.
Don't go forward, don't go backwards. Yep. So can we talk about this under old business next month again? Martin, maybe you have an RFP available by then or, or some sort of results by then?
So for, probably for the RFP, that would, just looking at timeframe, hopefully I can go online and, and pluck one up, if not, have to design it. I doubt, I, I probably would have to advertise it, so we're looking, probably it's going to take at least thirty days to get that out and. It's probably the next council meeting. I don't know if we'll have results back yet, but do you, do you want me to do an RFP for this process?
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think so. And in the meantime, I'd ask council to pull that page and, and take it home with you tonight and look at, over the next few weeks, look at those websites. Jeff's already had a chance to look at one site, let's look at some more. Maybe we, you know, there's no sense in re- Maybe we, you know, there's no sense in resetting the wheel if there's some successful sites out there, so let's, let's look at those. Any other comments for Zoom one in the agenda? All right. We have a item fifteen on our new business to discuss, and I'll let Craig and Martin talk about this a little bit. So Craig, you want to introduce this?
So, yeah, so we just recently got the results of the census, Roostick County and the country. And when that came out, we got the latest numbers of population and densities and where they live now and all of this. And we have had this discussion since my very first year in the council, again, almost ten years ago. We had the last census with the SAD one, but that they needed to look at their school board and the makeup of the school board and look at where the seats are, and to see about how to reapportion those seats so that they're fair, because there's widely varying districts in how many people live in them now, because they've moved around and moved in town. So since there's been no update to the school board size or any of the seats and their districts of any meaningful amount since the nineteen seventies, since nineteen seventy-five was the last time, I'm moving that the city, since we can request this, set up a work group that, that comes up with best to decide how to go about reapportioning the seats of the SAD one board. And so that's my motion tonight, and I've mentioned it, Martin, and we have had these discussions back and forth with their board, but they have not moved forward on it. And so I think, while we have new census figures, now is the time to do it, and we can make that request with the state in various manners, Martin mentioned, when we look into it. So I'm not saying that we know exactly how to do it, but that we set up the work group to move forward and make recommendations and, and include the interested parties.
A motion on the table, and, and so require a second, and then we can discuss. Is there any second on the motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jeff. Okay, so now we'll go to discussion. Before the council's comments, Martin, do you have a comment on, on this?
So it has been a while. I know last time we talked about it was prior to the twenty twenty census. The group said, okay, let's wait till the census comes out. And it, it has been a while, so I know that what Craig said is exactly right, that it was, it was a settlement at the time. It was issued by, by the state on how the, how the district was broken out for the population base on the nineteen seventy census. And I know a lot of legislation has changed. I remember it was one-person, one-vote principle, so each district was looking at, it would be around a thousand people. When this designed, when this was designed back then, it looked that each district was around six hundred people. And so populations have changed then, so I think it's a worthwhile thing to take a look at. At the time of the school, different superintendent, they, they welcomed the discussion, take a look at it after, after, afterwards. So I think we bring the school in on the discussion to start, take a look at this. And I remember that there's a few different methods. One of them is the school board can move forward. It's the commissioner, and the city involvement, I'm a little bit fuzzy on since it's been a while we took a look at. But I think it's, knowing it's been that long, populations change, it's time to take a look at it.
So again, we're looking to invite, enter into a discussion with SAD one regarding their representation and the number of people that are on the SAD one school board on SAD one, right? So it's kind of like, it's not redistricting, but it's like a reapportionment based on the current census.
Their reapportionment.
So what's, I guess, what's driving this? Like, has there been informal discussions with the school to say, hey, we, we'd like to do this, or is this coming from us telling the school we want to do it? Because I'm just thinking procedurally, maybe an informal conversation might have been a better way to start it?
We, we've had those informal conversations. I had that informal conversation with Lucy after the last census in two thousand ten, and they had ten years to act on it. They did not. And then we had that discussion again last year when we met with them. We had a joint meeting. Actually, Ben Greenlaw, Martin and I were at it. They were in their board meeting. We discussed some other things and discussed that we wanted to tackle this in the future, and that's when we discussed the fact that we would wait till after the census results are out. But at, at this point in time, there's seventeen members of that board that represent the greater part of the, the towns. And, and when we looked at it, just in our own community, there's some that have several hundred people in it, and there's some that have over a thousand people in it, because they just aren't appropriate any longer. And the school admits to that as well. It's just it hasn't been something that they've been moved to do, but the recommendation was that we do it after the census results came out. And, and the other part of it is that part of this in the request to move it forward is one of the items that the, the city can request and, and through the state, and that's part of the process. So we are part of the process since we're, we get there built. We also get to do requests like this.
Well, no real downside in not having some discussions and some meetings, but we're, but we're trying to initiate the process, because for the last few years, well, we've been waiting on the census. Now we have the opportunity to look at the census data, so we want to initiate the process now. So, any gentleman to the right?
What do we get for a benefit for doing this? I mean, this is the.
Updating something from nineteen seventy-five?
But isn't that the school board's deal? So.
They're part of the process.
If they're not doing the process, then when they get voted out, are new people in, or? Well.
Why do they need us to come and re-do it?
That job's just not been part of the priority, not part of the radar.
So why do we need to get involved?
Well, the, the thing is, there is not a equal vote of every school board member today, because they don't have equal districts. So some represent five hundred people, some represent a thousand people, you know, some don't. Very often, there's so many members on the board, because we did have a much larger population in nineteen seventy-five than we do now, that they can't even hardly find anyone to run for the board. I mean, look at how many times we've had empty seats, and we've had to appoint someone because there was one vote in that district this, in this last election. So, so it is something that certainly does need to be addressed and need to be honed up.
So they just don't have a care?
Well, they.
I mean, if, if I'm on board and you are not even able to run for the seat, I mean, that's kind of common sense to do something about it. I just, again, we've got numerous committees going and goals to achieve, and, I mean, hey, if you want to spend your time on it, go for it, but.
Well, it, it's, I, I think it's, it's a, it's a civic duty that we have, that we need to make it fair, that, that people are actually represented by a school board member, number one, that there's people actually in their district that want to run, and secondly, that they're equally represented, because they are.
No, I'm not pushing that. That's just my comment.
Gentlemen, anymore?
Uh, I mean, as long as the school's on board with it, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. Makes sense to have equal districts, and fifty years is a long time, so.
Been a while, and I, I think, I think that the discussion will be beneficial for both parties and for the citizens here in Prescott. We have had several elections lately that have had difficulty finding representatives to run for school board, as well as we've had for other things, as well as city council people. So one of the hopeful benefits of this may be to, to try to alleviate some of that in the future, so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just like the tactic of maybe, you know, initiating a communication and including them in the discussion as opposed to.
We have.
Voting on it and telling them that they gotta do something.
We have, but we're, but we're the ones that initiate it. That's our job.
Has there been any discussions with the school in the last two weeks regarding this?
No.
Then if I was the school, I'd be a little blindsided by this when it hits the paper.
Well, they've had the opportunity for ten years to do it, and they haven't, and so now they're gonna have the opportunity to move forward.
And this is to invite them to enter discussion and stuff?
Is that what this, so maybe you can clarify this vote a little bit. Is this forcing their hand at all? Is this?
Well.
No, it's just, it's a refresher of, of the procedure and remind.
But if, like, if we vote.
Show somebody how to.
No, this is, this is voting to put a committee together to go about how you would do it, because ultimately, this group would have the right to go to the Department of Education and force them to do it, but we're not doing that. We're, we're saying, let's have a discussion and have a working group. That's what this is.
And then when they say no, then you gotta force them.
So this is similar to, you know, a dangerous building, you know, we kind of start with public notices, and you start with, you know, some discussions, and then ultimately, at the end, you have some sort of decision and stuff. So, and it could, could wind up to be right where we are in seventy-five, but it's unlikely, because the population's changed a lot since seventy-five. So, is there any other comments on the motion? It's been moved by Jeff or Craig and seconded by?
Jeff?
Jeff.
Could I hear the motion again?
To set up a working group with the interested parties to decide how to best reapportion seats for the board for SAD one.
You're good for that.
And seeing all the comments, all those in favor of the motion?
One, two, three, four, five, six. All those opposed?
I just would like to go on record that I wish we had, had that disinitiated by them. I'm not against the idea of it, but.
You voted in favor?
I did.
Seven to zero with your comments included in our minutes. Thank you. So next item in the business is the manager's report.
So, the other things that we've been working on is we had a marijuana working group this morning. We did talk about, we had a meeting with the parties that we identified last meeting, and working on, we developed a timeline with the director from Economic and Community Development. So we have a path forward. So in the next upcoming months, we're gonna look at what recommendations comes out of that working group. So really good discussion. I was really happy to have, have multiple opinions on that. On Monday evening, the Prescott Rec Association had a meeting. It was the first meeting of the nonprofit entity for the rec department, so now they're, do have an entity that is a nonprofit. So we got that, working on the bylaws with that committee. And last week, we had a facade committee meeting to talk about the facade design. So pretty productive past, past a couple of weeks. We definitely, definitely have some things that will be coming up on future agendas.
Thank you very much, sir. For announcements this evening, we have the following vacancies for boards and committees. The zoning board, the audit committee, downtown revitalization committee, and the library board has an alternate board position open. If anybody is interested in any of those openings, please see the city clerk or apply online. Finally, the next scheduled meeting of the Prescott City Council is on Wednesday, April sixth, two thousand twenty-two, here at the Sergeant Center at six P M. Seeing no other business, I would entertain a motion pursuant to one R M R S A four oh five six C to discuss real estate.
Second.
All those in favor? Those opposed?